Board meeting tonight. We can all stand before the legions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Volunteering. Opportunity for members of the community to address the Board of Education on agenda topics only. Anybody? Okay. Item A, approval of consent agenda items. Like this marks, second Mr. Dorr. All in favor? Motion carried. There is no old business. New business. Adoption of 2016-17 school calendar. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second. Ms. Legan, any discussion? Yes.
I was looking at it, and I know that it's crammed, but there's no way that they can get them Wednesday before Thanksgiving. That has been like a no-no in this district. A hundred years.
This was a discussion that we did have with your secretary as well. And no, it's just not going to work. You know, all the units are in agreement that this was the best possible scenario going forward. And we do have three snow days built in, which was something that was very important because it doesn't help when we go into the February or April break. It's kind of lost instructional time, given all of the students that don't show up. So we have built three snow days in and think that that's a better way to go forward in instructional classes for students.
Anyone else? All in favor? Motion carried. Item B, second reading of revised updated board policies. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Brown, second. Thank you, Ms. Legan. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Third reading will be next meeting. Item C, appointment of vote workers for the special district meetings for the libraries. Motion? Thank you, Ms. Grass, second. Mr. Dorr, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. Item D, call for special district meeting. This is for the school budget vote and election of board members on May 17th. It also gives the timeline. May 10th is the budget hearing in the high school cafeteria. Voter registration deadline for qualified voters is on May 3rd at the district office. And I think that was the other. Oh, and petitions for nomination are available to D O L now. Thank you. First, Mr. Meyer, second, Mr. Grass. Any discussion about these dates? All in favor? Motion carried. Item E, nomination of candidate for position on the Eastern Southern Bosse's Board.
So vote.
Thank you, Ms. Grass, second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any discussion?
I'm glad to see Mr. Shanks hanging in there.
Yes. All in favor? Motion carried. Item F, approval of field trips. Varsity girls track and field team. And the second field trip is Key Club. Motion? Thank you, Mr. Buzz, second. Mr. Dorr, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carried. At this time, we have Ms. Carney.
Thank you. This evening, we're continuing with our budget presentations for the 2016-17 school year. Today, we'll be talking about the regular school day budget along with our transportations and our buildings and grounds. This is our agenda for the presentation. As we do with each meeting, we talk about the Board of Education budget calls, our tax cap review. And as I said today, we're talking about facilities, security, transportation, as well as our regular day education. And these are our financial and operational goals. We each year do try to develop a budget that maintains our district programs. We want to be sure we have adequate resources for our students and our staff. And we also want to make sure that we support the community in what the community expensed from us as a district. One of the things that we've been very involved in is monitoring all the new legislation that's coming down and its impact on the district. This is a year that the tax levy cap is extremely low. As you're aware, it's at 0.12%. So we really had to work hard to create a budget that enabled us to keep our existing programs. One of the things that we're being faced with as a district, and you'll see as I get further on into the slides, is our increased enrollment. Our enrollment is really skyrocketing. I think Mr. Dr. Legan gave me an update recently. We have about 105 new students today since September that we have added new students that were not here last year in the high school, over 40 at the middle school. And we're adding additional students at our elementary schools almost on a daily basis. So increasing enrollment is something that we are faced with as a district. So the tax cap, what does the law say? That revenues raised by the district through the property tax can increase no more than approximately 2% or CPI, whichever is less. Things that are exempt from the tax calculation are capital costs and some pension costs. Pension costs are not applicable for the 2016-17 school year due to the expected contribution rates. So what is the tax cap of 2016-17? The Consumer Price Index, or the CPI, produces monthly data on changes in the price paid by consumers for basket of goods and services. And as you can see, as I mentioned before, the CPI this year is only at 0.12%, meaning that the tax levy cap without exemptions is near zero. And I've been in a lot of discussions with our legislators and with the state aid department. And this was really never something they anticipated. So this year is really a struggle for many districts. Once the exemptions are calculated, our property tax levy cap is at just about 0.5%, meaning that the overall levy will increase by no more than $483,928 from the current 2015-16 school year. Just so you're aware, as we say, we are committed to staying within the tax levy cap. And we are going to be able to do that, fortunately, based on some additional state aid. As we mentioned, the retirement incentive that we have for our teachers and also being able to use some of our reserves to make up any difference because we are in very good shape. We do have 10 buildings, as you're aware, and many subsidiary structures. Our custodians and maintenance mechanics clean and repair. As you can see, 714,110 square feet of district buildings. And they maintain nearly 200 acres of land throughout the year. We're very proud of our facilities, our maintenance, the conditions of our buildings. One of our real goals is, as we are renovating our buildings, that we be sure that we maintain them as we go forward and that we keep them in really good shape as we're putting all this effort and work into our buildings through the bond. We want to make sure that we maintain them and that we do keep them in good shape. And we are very committed to doing that. Security, our guards do control our buildings and our special events throughout the years. They work very collaboratively with our local police. They're at all of our special events, very visible. And we are, once again, very proud of our security system. But this is an area that we're constantly committed to updating, to looking at how we can do things more efficiently and to really be sure that we're proactive in all of our buildings, that we're prepared for any emergency situations that may occur. And also just being sure that we're there for our students and staff on a daily basis. Facilities and security changes planned for the 2016-17 school year. As I mentioned, we're permitted to maintain things and also replacing anything that's outdated or broken. This doesn't include new security cameras, any type of cleaning equipment, grounds maintenance equipment, additional snow removal equipment and replacement of fencing. We will need to purchase some additional snow removalment equipment as we go forward. We have had some challenging winters and it is more cost-effective when we have our own equipment. We also do need some additional personnel for increased security for our students. We've added a lot of square footage to our buildings, particularly at the middle school and high school levels. So here you can see, our personnel has actually gone down a little bit. And that is due to retirements and replacing people with people that are a little bit less expensive. Our equipment, as I said, we do need to purchase. This is specifically for snow removal equipment and some additional grounds maintenance equipment, which we need to purchase to maintain our fields. Our service contracts are just up a little bit, and that's obviously just due to increasing costs. Our bosse's is up just a little bit and materials and supplies are just up a small percentage. And you can see, all of our facilities are up about 1.3%. Security, this is an area, as I said, where we do need to increase personnel based on additional square footage and also based on the needs of the buildings. Equipment is remaining flat. Our service contracts are up slightly. And then materials and supplies are also up slightly. And this is because of new cameras. Equipment that we need, additional uniforms for different, for getting security people and making sure that we have proper training for all of our security guards. Transportation, as we share each year, we are proud of our transportation department. We own and operate 67 full-size buses, 27 vans, and nine wheelchair accessible vehicles. We have been recognized by the New York State Department of Transportation as among the best vehicle maintenance programs statewide. We have a 99/42% pass rate, which is up slightly from the prior year. And as you see, you know, we're one of the largest geographical districts on the island. Our drivers travel over a million miles per year transporting students to seven public schools, nine non-public schools, and four special ed schools. So here you can see transportation. Personnel is up by 1.95%. Our equipment is down. This was due, we had to purchase some new equipment, particularly for our propane buses going back and for some equipment that we use for changing tires. Also, our service contracts are down. We are using more people in-house rather than going outside. Our bosse's costs are up for transportation. And this is particularly for students who are outside of the district. These are mandated transportation costs, mostly for our special education students. And materials and supplies are up just slightly. So here's where you get to, obviously, you know, one of the most important areas in any district, and that is our instructional program. We have been meeting for the past few months with all of our administrators to really identify areas of need in our instructional programs. And the additions that we're proposing are really due to our increased enrollment in both E N L and special education and also for our regular ed students and making sure that we have enough special areas, teachers, to be sure that we're providing our kids with a well-rounded program. So here you can see the proposed additions. 2.5 ESL teachers, a point for art teacher, a point for tech teacher, a 1.0 tech teacher, a 1.0 science teacher, a 1.0 AIS math teacher, and a 1.0 reading teacher. And then we also have some curriculum development. We've been really working hard on making sure our curriculum is aligned to our standards and involving all of our teachers. Our last area is social studies, and we've already begun the process. I'm excited to have that complete by September. We do need some new math and social studies textbooks at the middle and high school. We are implementing our National Geographic Science Program at all of our elementary schools in September. We've been piloting it over the last two years. And then also, we do need to update our classroom libraries in the elementary schools district-wide. And here, administration and state mandated testing. You can see, our administrators are responsible for facilitating the development of our curriculum, the implementation of new requirements. We have a lot of new mandates from the state, particularly for English as New Language learners that we have to implement. And there are a lot of procedures and protocol that we have to put in place, from assessing students to registering students, to being sure that we have the proper programs. Our administrators do oversee over 5,000 students and more than 400 instructional staff members. And we are not adding administrative staffs as we're going forward at this time. So here you can see where we are with our curriculum instructional, administration and state mandated testing. Instructional salaries are up a little over 3%. Non-instructional, which includes all of our clerical, is up a little under 2%. Equipment is the same. Our contractual expenses are considerably less. As I said, we try to do more and more in-house rather than go outside. Bosse's services are up slightly, and our materials and supplies are down slightly due to us, as I said, always trying to be a little bit more efficient in how we can operate. So our general classroom teaching instruction and support, we are very dedicated to being sure that we provide good instruction in our classrooms, that we have modern technology, and that we encourage our teachers to be innovative in looking at how they work with our students. We do support our teachers and our staff when they want to think outside the box and do things a little differently based on the needs of our students. We do, we're very proud of our staff, and we also are very proud of the achievement of our students. And here you can see the general classroom teaching instruction and support. Our instructional salaries are up by a little over 1%. The non-instructional up by 7.16%. We did have to hire a number of clerical staff due to increased enrollment, particularly at the PPS. Our equipment is up significantly. And as I said, that was due to us having to purchase some additional snow plows and tractors and machines for the maintenance of our grounds. Our contractual expenses are down. Our charter school tuition is up significantly. It's a great expense for us. Our electronic and printed textbooks are up just slightly. Our bosse's services that you can see are up. And materials and supplies overall up about 18%. So here's our budget summary to date. These are the areas that we have talked about so far. And that's the general support, which is up by 0.31%. Our benefits up by 2.67%. Our debt service, which is one of our largest increases due to our bond, is up 19.48%. Facilities, 1.29. Security, 5.7. Transportation, 2%. Curriculum administration, 2.19%. And our general classroom instruction, 2.49%. So the overall budget summary to date is at about 3.41%. And then our next presentation will be on March 22nd. And we'll be talking about special education, PPS guidance, and some other instructional items. Then April 13th is when we discuss our revenues and our projected tax levy and V O E and adoption of the proposed budget. We are still waiting to hear from the state on our exact amount of state aid. We're still hoping that our gap elimination adjustment is going to increase a bit so that we do get some additional state aid. On May 10th, we'll have our public hearing on the proposed budget. And on the 17th, we'll be our budget vote from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at our local polling stations. And if you have questions at this point. Thank you. Here we begin. District news. Yes? Just, it's nice to have a beautiful spring day today. It's exciting that we're getting into the spring season. March is actually music month in all of our schools. And I did want to open the meeting just with some exciting music updates that are happening around the district. First, I want to congratulate Dylan Faber-Wiggins, Shannon McGallister, Michael Harris, Lauren Schmidt, Daniel Jones, Joshua Privet, Peter Cook, Cesar Flores, and Nick Waldron. These are all students at Riverhead High School who were chosen among only 375 students from across the state to participate in the annual New York State Band Directors Association symposium. And these members of the honor band are really among the best musicians that we have at the district and the best among all New York State students. And while at the symposium, the students were directed by a retired music instructor from the University of Michigan. And they also attended a number of workshops and rehearsals. So we are really looking forward to their return. They went on March 6th and went for a couple of days and looking forward to hearing about their experience while they were there and also looking forward to them participating in our spring concerts. And then in other music news, our middle school and Phillips chorus teacher, Nadine Greenberg, was chosen as a guest director at the Suffolk County Music Educators Music Festival. And this is a very prestigious appointment. And it's recognition by Mrs. Greenberg's peers of her outstanding talent as a music educator. And Nadine has been teaching at Riverhead since 2004. She's brought incredible enthusiasm to her work. In addition to her gift as a choral teacher, she is an accomplished harpist and has performed in several orchestras, including performing at Carnegie Hall and also at Lincoln Center. And I know many of you have been to the concerts where she is directing, and she is truly a gift. And we're very happy to have her here in the district. Also, just want to mention, I think we had a fun time at the fifth annual crazy sports night. Overall, I was not sore this year afterwards. I was very careful. And this was held on February 26th at the high school. And we thank the PTO. And we do want to say congratulations to Pulaski on their victory in the contest where we all get quite competitive with each other. And the night did raise, most importantly, $4,600 for the various PTO's in Riverhead to benefit the students at each school. So we thank everyone who participated and organized the event. Also, during the intermission, we were treated to a preview performance of the Blue Mask Springs amusement hall Shrek. And tickets are now on sale for the performance. It's going to be April 8th at 7:00 p.m., April 9th at 2:00 and 7:00, and April 10th at 2:00. It should be a wonderful performance, and we're looking forward to it. Also, want to mention the annual T art show took place this past weekend at the Riverhead Library. The gallery space at the library really does a nice job of showing off all of our students' artwork in grades 9 through 12. The friends of the library did a really wonderful job coordinating the event with our art teacher. They had a nice reception for our students and the public and encourage everyone to visit the library. The student artwork will be on view there until March 23rd. Also, just want to mention that as we're talking about music in the schools month at the library, the two are going to come together on March 18th at 6:00 p.m. when the Riverhead High School Jazz Ensemble and Chamber Orchestra will perform at a free concert at the library, presented by the Youth and Family Service Department. All ages are welcome, and it should be a really nice event. And then just want to end with some sports news. We want to congratulate Riverhead High School student Luke Colter, who placed second in the 600-meter dash at New York State Track and Field Championship, held this past weekend at Cornell University in Ithaca. He broke his own school record in finishing only 0.28 seconds behind the state champion. So we really congratulate. It was quite the accomplishment. And then just want to say, in case anyone hasn't done so yet, please visit our district website and find instructions about signing up with the free service first book. And through first book, if we get 2,000 people to sign up, the district will receive 40,000 free books for our classrooms and libraries. We can't get there without everyone's help and participation. So please go to the website and click on first book link. Very excited about receiving these books. And I know that we've been doing a really good job getting people to sign up. So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carney.
Opportunity for board members.
I got two quick questions. Ms. Carney, is there any update on the solar project thing coming together?
They are currently working with our attorneys on a contract, putting it together. Once that's all done, we'd like to invite them to do a presentation to see if it's something the board wants to go forward with.
Excellent, thank you. And, sorry, excuse me. The second thing, I happened to be in the neighborhood on Saturday of Cornell University, so I stopped in, told everybody my name was Sam. But I was very fortunate to go there.
They let you stay?
Yeah, absolutely. It was a special seating. I was pretty fortunate to go up there and watch Luke Colter run. Really, from being involved in sports my whole life, my kids, still going forward, seeing somebody just give the dedication to giving their absolute all to try and win something and set another milestone in his personal life was just unbelievable. There's great stories of all the kids that participated in that race, but I won't share what they were doing afterwards near the garbage belts. But it was, the whole day, the whole event, all Saturday, was really excellent, just seeing the tops in the state perform at such a great level and great sportsmanship. So I'm happy I was in the neighborhood to swing by and witness that. So I just want to reiterate what you said. Congratulations to Luke. What a great runner he is. I don't know if everybody knows this, but he's pretty much broken a new school record for track right now here at Riverhead in middle distance and long distance. And I'm looking forward to seeing what he's going to do in the spring track season. He has a great, great future, probably one of the best track athletes, I think, that's come to the school in quite a while, if not the best. So really exciting. Congratulations to Luke.
Mr. Dorr.
Have we received the plans back from the state for the turf field?
Not yet.
Okay.
Very well. Before I mention, the petitions for nomination with the upcoming election are available at the district office. And I believe they're due Monday, April 18th at 5:00 p.m., right? Yes. Just to reiterate, I know I mentioned it before. Two seats are open and one seat is vacant. So the candidates that receive the first and second most votes will sit in the open seats for three years. And the candidate with the third most votes will sit in the vacancy for one year, just so everybody is clear on that. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. Opportunity for RCFA.
You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity for members of the community.
So I'm Ash Capolo Galvettin. Can we talk about the turf field again? Did we go forward with a turf field with chrome rubber? Or have we gone forward with an alternative to chrome rubber, given the safety issues that have been brought to light about chrome rubber?
I have to look into that, Mr. Masterfellow, and I can't give you an answer.
Okay, I too.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Grass, second, Mr. Dor, all in favor? Motion carried. Thank you for attending tonight, we'll see you in two weeks.